Before we convene this meeting, I'd like to read a declaration from the governor. On March 13, 2020, Governor Greg Abbott issued a declaration of emergency as a result of the COVID-19 virus outbreak. Subsequently, on March 16, 2020, pursuant to the authority granted in the end of declaration, Governor Abbott temporarily suspended the application of certain provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551, in order to permit telephonic open meetings. This was an effort to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 virus by avoiding large group meetings while still ensuring continued governmental operations and preserving transparency in the decision-making process. Pursuant to this authority, Tarrant County College District gave notice of its intent to conduct today's workshop meeting as a telephonic and video conference open meeting. Three trustees will participate in person for this meeting. Myself, Conrad Heed, Mr. Kenneth Barr, and Mr. William Greenhill. Dr. Diane Patrick, Dr. Gwimlin Morrison, and Ms. Teresa Ayala will participate via video conference or telephonically. I'll now call to order the Board of Trustees meeting of January 14 to order. Is there any public comment? No public comment. I would like to read an announcement regarding a vacancy on our board. The Tarrant County College District Board of Trustees announces a vacancy in a District Five trustee position following the resignation of Pastor Michael Evans, who is to serve as mayor of Mansfield, Texas. The board invites any qualified residents of District Five interested in serving as a trustee on this board to submit a resume to reginald gates at reginald dot gates at tccd.edu on or before noon on January 21, 2021. The board will be making an appointment for the District Five position for an interim period of January 21 through May 1 of 2021. Applicants will be invited to make a personal statement to the board at that meeting not to exceed three minutes in length at the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees at 6:00 PM on January 21, 2021. The board then will review all submissions and interview all applicants in closed session at that meeting. Finally, the board will vote on the interim appointment at that meeting, and the appointee will serve as a District Five trustee until May 1, 2021. Please note that persons wanting to serve from May 2, 2021 through May 2023 for the balance of District Five trustees' unexpired term will need to file for election no later than February 12, 2021, and thereafter stand for election on May 1, 2021. Further information is available from Mr. Gates at 817-515-5001 or reginald dot gates We'll now go to item three, review of board business items. We'll review the meeting minutes of the December 10, 2020 work session meeting minutes draft. Anybody have any comments, suggestions, motion? Oh, this is after we -- we're in a work session. We're in a work session. Okay, so anybody have any comments or suggestions? There being none, we go to item B, December 17, 2020 Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes. Again, that's a draft. Any comments, observations? There being none. Item D is consideration approval of resolution and order for election services for May 1, 2021 trustee elections. Ms. Bracken.
Good afternoon, trustees, President Heed, Chancellor Giavignini. We are asking you today to consider the resolution put together dealing with the election on May the 1st for the trustee spots, the three trustee spots that are up for reelection on May the 1st of this year. If you have any questions about the documentation, I'd be happy to answer those questions.
Questions, comments? Thank you. Consideration and approval of resolution and order for election services on May 1st trustee elections.
This resolution deals with the need to engage the services of Tarrant County to assist with the election process.
Questions, comments?
Mr. Heed, this is Teresa. I do have a question, please.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Ms. Bracken, do you know whether or not TCC has -- all of the campuses will be polling locations for that election?
I do not. I don't -- we have not been given that information from the county at this point.
Okay. Okay. But by when do they normally notify us of -- or who decides or when that decision is made or?
The county makes the decision, and it's usually about eight weeks in advance.
Okay.
Can I make that request?
Yeah, is that something we could request?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
We generally are.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, suggestions? Thank you, Carol. Item four, Chancellor's overview. Dr. Giavignini.
Thank you, Mr. Heed. Just a quick overview of the items proposed on today's agenda. We have a number of them related to the improving of the support and learning for the college experience, specifically aviation maintenance training aids. We have a number of items related to the advancement of our physical program improvements, specifically some roof drainage repair by Chambers and sewer rehab by Cable Company. And then we are grouped contracts with Jacobs as relates to owner's representation, Skanska as a construction contractor, Hukbe, and Perkins as well as architects. When we get to those items, in item 6D, particularly, Susan will make a presentation. This is not new information. It's a presentation for the board that relates to these items, 6D, 6E, 6F, and 6G, and she will share that all at that time in a grouping. And as part of that, she will also share some additional exploration that has been done in response to some of the board's feedback and inquiry from last month, and she'll bring you up to date and up to speed with a firm that has been identified to provide additional due diligence that was requested specifically as it relates to technology smart buildings. And finally, we have a number of other items that speak to the purchase of computers and iPhones and some policy changes to review with you related to procurement and cleaning up some language, the elimination of some fund balance designations. Again, this is some cleanup that will be explained to you, and then to establish the rules and procedures to continue to be able to respond to the COVID-19 situation. And also, we will conclude with some deductive change orders. Thank you, Mr. Heed.
Thank you, Chancellor. We'll now go to item five, review of proposed consent agenda items for the board meeting on January 21, 2021. Item 5A is consideration approval of contract with Avotec for 10 units of Avotec trainers for the Aviation Maintenance Technician Program at the amount of $139,454.
Good afternoon, President Heed, members of the board. This is a request for approval for the purchase of 10 units of training aids for the Aviation Maintenance Training Program manufactured by Avotec. And this is to replace aging educational display items and components that are either unserviceable or not used by the instructor. What these training aids are are components of an aircraft that are mounted on a display board so that students have access to these aircraft components without having to go to the airplane. And these display boards are movable and can be moved into the classroom or to the lab. And these training components meet federal aviation requirements for Part 147 of the curriculum. We already have five. We would like to purchase 10, and the five that we currently have, we have purchased over the last 12 years.
Will this allow us to increase the number of students taking the course or just make it more convenient?
What it will do is provide students with the practical, hands-on training that they need and bring that particular training to the classroom without having to go to the aircraft. And I think indirectly it will help support the instruction in the classroom.
You're talking about a classroom. Is this -- are these courses the kind that we do not have Zoom-in training, education? Are these in-person classes?
That is correct. That is correct. These are in-person classrooms, and the components on the display board, simulate aircraft systems in ice and rain, hydraulic systems, landing gear, anti-skid, air cycle or air conditioning, cockpit instrumentation, both traditional and digital.
Any other questions, discussion? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item 5B, consideration approval of amendments to CF (local) and CM[1359.41][1359.41](local) related to procurement policies.
I have some slides to pull up, I think. So you may recall that back in November, I gave a presentation to the board talking about some of the discrepancies in our current policies adopted by the board about procurement compared to our practices, as well as the larger context about how it fits into state statute. There's board policy, and of course, there's procedures that we implement administratively. And so this is to follow up on that with the recommended changes to the policy. So a couple of things. The current policy actually doesn't cover in great detail a couple of things. It actually delegates to the chancellor any budgeted purchases, which is obviously vague and not very helpful in terms of a standard. And it allows the chancellor to develop procedures that conform to state and federal law, and then it also has for job order contractors, which are the trades group that we engage for smaller construction projects, to contract up to $500,000 per project or $3 million per individual firm in a year. The only thing it dictates that the board must approve is construction contracts, except the jocks, over $100,000, and then the delivery and contract award method. What we're doing in practice is that we're bringing $100,000 in aggregate spend of any kind of contract, whether it's construction or jock or procurement, to the board for approval. So just to make the point that we're actually doing more than the current policy provides for, but it also adds to confusion when people are trying to understand what the rules of engagement are. So basically, what we're recommending, and again, there's two policies. One is CF local, which is purchasing and acquisition of all types. And what we want to do is memorialize and define the $100,000 threshold and indicate that that's for all types of contracting, and it's in aggregate with a particular firm, and also for renewals and so on. So just to be clear to staff about when they need to come to the board. It also formally delegates authority to the chancellor in alignment with our current practices, some things under state law. First of all, entering into electricity contracts, this is something that we normally bring to you separately as a standalone item, but we'll just incorporate it here to have it all in one place. It makes it clear that you're delegating to the chancellor to execute contracts on behalf of the district, and then also to determine the method of purchase in accordance with state law. And it also establishes the authority levels for us to obligate funds previously. I think it said only my position and the chancellor had the authority to do that, but there's a variety of other ways that funds are obligated, including our procurement card program. So the purchasing cards a lot are used for efficiency across the organization, so we've memorialized that as well and described those transaction limits. As far as the CM local, this is geared more towards construction contracts, so again, memorializing that $100,000 threshold to include jocks. And so getting rid of that $500,000 language will also eliminate the practice of a deductive change order for things that aren't truly a change order. They are returning contingency that was allocated to -- back to available funds at the conclusion of a project, because it doesn't add a lot of value for you guys to have that here. I'd rather the energy of the board be focused on true change orders. It does retain the language that change order over $25,000 does require board approval for contracts over $100,000 or that that triggers to be over $100,000. And so, again, making sure that we've got appropriate board approval. The other thing that we're doing, and you've got a red line as well as a clean copy in your packet if you have the opportunity to take a look at it, but we're formalizing the job order contracting and professional services pools practices. In the past, the board has approved them initially when those programs were set up, but the list of the vendors that submitted their qualifications to be on those lists didn't necessarily come back to the board each time, and so we want to memorialize that. We're striking the language with a higher spending authority, and what we'll do is if staff is recommending, authorizing a higher spending authority, we will do that in each time that you re-up the list of jocks that are eligible for work so that we can report out on how that program is going. Recently, we've been in the process, like we told you last summer, of rebidding that jock contract, giving opportunities for vendors to get on that list. And part of it was also to redefine how we were doing pricing for those as well. And so you should see that at the February board meeting as a follow-up to that. And finally, it just memorializes that the chancellor will promulgate procedures to make sure that we ensure quality and fairness in terms of how that work is allocated. And then finally, state law actually says that the board will approve the project delivery award method. What happens in practice is that staff does that within the range of things that I think the board is comfortable with. For example, we've used the construction manager at risk for both of our large current projects for Northwest, and that's what is planned for Southeast. And what this does is just memorializes that that has been delegated to the board, and then when the contract is actually approved, it comes back to the board for consideration. So again, this sort of tidies up all of our procedures to match what we're doing, as well as reduces some of the prior authority that wasn't being exercised anyway. So it'll add more clarity for staff to exercise, but be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. In regard to CF local, this is a question for the chancellor. There's a highlighted one about a contract for purchase of electricity, says if the chancellor is worried, it opens a can of worms. It is not critical. So is this critical?
Electricity critical?
No, I'm saying, is this -- there's a note here that says if the chancellor's worried about this addition, if it opens a cans of worm, this is not critical.
Oh, actually, well, that's my fault. That was our internal note, so.
All right, okay. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah, we -- that was a question for me among staff, so I apologize for that. So yeah, yeah. So originally, I was just -- I wasn't sure how this authority was being granted every year, and I've come to find out that it would be brought to the board each time the contract was renewed. And I didn't want this to feel like an expansion of the chancellor's authority that had been granted before, so. So I apologize that that question was still on the list.
Okay.
Anyway, that's my fault.
Any further questions, comments?
This is Teresa. Yes, I just have a quick question, if you don't mind. Ms. Allenese, where it says that the policy CM local will eliminate the practice of deductive change orders, return of contingency. Are all of the deductive change orders, they always, of course, include the contingency, but do we see that there's been a practice where it's more than the contingency? Or is that just usually what it is?
So there are occasions where we change scope, and those would continue to come to you. There was one recently, and I can't recall what the details of it were, where the scope was reduced. And as a result, we reduced the contract. Those would continue to come to you. If it's just a return of contingency, then it would not. And the other thing that we've added in the policy is that we've actually identified a maximum contingency that'll be included in typical budgets at 10% so that you can be assured that we're not inflating that in a way that precludes us from coming back to the board. So put some constraints around that as well.
Thank you for that. I'm sorry. I did have another question, if you don't mind. It was along the lines of the one that Mr. Greenville mentioned about the electricity. In the CF local, it says formally delegates authority to the chancellor to enter into electricity contracts within a set period of time. What is that set period of time?
So because we participate in the state pool for electricity contracts, sometimes those things happen very quickly where you've got to make a decision about getting on board and what the pricing will be based on, I think, market dynamics at any given moment with how those are negotiated. And so this delegated authority in the past and with this change is intended just to give the chancellor the ability to jump on those as needed. So this is not a change in the authority he's been granted in the past.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just had a question. What's our procedure in cases where, for example, significant funds come back to the district beyond what were approved? The equivalent of what comes to the money, becomes of the money like a deductive change order?
Yeah, so essentially...
And I say that I've seen situations where those accounts weren't closed out and those funds were held by some piece of the organization for later use at their discretion.
Yeah, so essentially, since the way this board operates, that you approve contracts and projects individually, any of those savings would revert back to Fund 40 available funds and to reallocate them to another project that meets that $100,000 threshold, then it would come back to the board for approval.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you. We'll move on then to Items 5C, consideration and approval for the elimination of fund balanced designations for insurance, future operating, and future capital.
That one is mine, too. So you may recall last month, I pointed out that there were a couple of provisions that got reported in the financial statements each year that created designations for those three categories. So it was insurance, future capital, and future operating. And those are sort of relics, some going back to the '70s, that were created to make sure that the district was planning for that. They're sort of redundant and lesser than the fund balance policy that this board adopted, I believe, last August. And so it's really unnecessary now for us to carry that as a condition in our financial statements. And so we'll rely on the fund balance policy that requires a six-month operating budget and also creates a mechanism for a fund balance associated with our capital program.
Any questions, discussion? Thank you, Ms. Allenese. Item 5D, consideration approval of resolution granting authority to the chancellor until April 1, 2021, to establish rules and procedures necessary to combat the spread of the COVID-19 virus and to facilitate the continuity of the district's operation. Ms. Bracken.
You may recall, starting last March, this board decided to delegate authority to the chancellor to be able to take actions that may be a little beyond the existing policy in order to deal with the emergencies that we've encountered in connection with COVID in the aftermath. His current authority has expired, and we are recommending that that authority be extended until April 1, 2021. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to discuss them.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Yes, I, Ms. Bracken, I was wondering, what is an example of something that would be an emergency at this point in the COVID pandemic? I know we've been in a situation where we absolutely had things that were necessarily emergency nature. Can you please give us examples of things at this point in time?
The good news is that I don't think we have it. We have not had those emergencies as we did early in this pandemic period. For example, we needed to, there was an urgent need to spend a great deal of money on sanitization. We have not, that I recall, had any of these emergencies in the last couple of months. I can't think of anything off the top of my head that might be coming up. But in the occasion that we have used it, we will report to you monthly for ratification and confirmation.
The expiration is January 31st, is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
So do you really think there's a need to do this now? Do we really have these situations coming up in the last couple of months?
I guess the best answer to that is that I don't know, and I would prefer to have the flexibility if an emergency does occur. Thank you.
Was there any CARES money in his latest stimulus package? And do we anticipate anything in the future?
The package that's just been passed, yes. And we did get a draft yesterday of the amount, Reg, and if it was correct, 48? 48 to 49 million dollars. That's not definitive, though. That was a draft allocation.
And the lion's share of those funds, once again, are to be used for student assistance, although there is a component that can be used by the college for costs associated with COVID.
48, 49 million for TCC?
Yes.
Wow.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I recall that we've received reports for previous monthly periods of time. I don't think we've gotten a report in some time.
He hasn't used the authority in the last, hasn't needed to use the authority in the last couple of months.
Well, and considering this, I would suggest that if there's been no action during a period of time, we ought to be advised that...
We can make that. And would you like a monthly report that says that it wasn't used?
I would suggest a monthly report that says there was no action during this period of time.
That can be done.
You know, I generally think this is reasonable, but I think it's something the board expects to watch very closely.
Understood.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, this is Quay Morrison.
Go ahead.
I agree. I just feel that out of an abundance of caution, that we should go ahead and... With the understanding that, you know, we'll expect the monthly reports, even if the monthly report says that it wasn't used, that we would get a monthly report.
We can certainly do that.
And this authority grants the chancellor the authority to expend the CARES money, the 48, 49 million?
It does not, it's not specifically limited. It's actually the new H-E-E-R-C-F Act. It's not specifically limited to that. It's to take actions relating to COVID in the aftermath.
Chancellor, are there any situations coming up that you can anticipate?
Not in particular, no, unless there was something to come out of an academic area that suggested the need to buy technology or the like. But at this point, no.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Bracken. We'll consider Item 5E, which is consideration and approval of Southern Computer Warehouse, Inc., and GTS Technology Solutions to the list of approved vendors for the statutory exempted procurement method expenditures in the amount of $400,000 not to exceed per vendor. Mr. Pacheco.
Yes, good afternoon. When TCC transitioned to a remote work environment, we sent all employees home with laptops. During the course of the year, we augmented their laptops with additional devices such as cameras, monitors, things like that, to make them productive or more productive than they actually were. The request is for more remote work kits. These computers and accessory standards are based on the Workspace Advisory Panel recommendations that were approved last year. To date, we have distributed over 700 kits. One current rate is, our current rate that we give out these kits are about 22 per week. This request is based on that rate for the rest of the fiscal year. Any questions?
Would this be funded by that CARES money?
This could be funded by CARES Act if, once the student needs are met.
Any other questions, suggestions? There be none?
Mr. Chairman, did you say these kits are distributed to whom?
To the staff, employees, the faculty, and the staff itself.
Okay. Do we have a similar expenditure for, similar products for students?
For students in need, we do provide tablets and where we also have to, Chromebooks.
Do we provide hotspots?
The tablets are actually hotspots. And so when a student needs that, they can get it through the tablets.
Okay. Thank you. So you have enough supply of those? You don't need to purchase anymore right now?
Currently, we're meeting the needs of the students.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? We'll move on then to 5F, consideration and approval of a two-year contract for iPhones from T-Mobile to be used by field services staff from real estate facilities and IT in the amount of $187,538.40.
Yes, this is just a two-year request for phones to replace our outdated Sprint phones with T-Mobile Apple 11 phones. We have about 210 phones, 170 will go to our facilities folks, and 25 will go to IT with 15 to spare. And we also monitor these phones through our mobile device management program that we run through IT.
Questions, suggestions, comments?
This is Teresa. I have a quick question, please.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Pacheco, is the, are these devices also being tracked via our, the database as far as the equipment, like, just like computers and things like that?
Exactly. We monitor and we audit them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd be curious, is this a competitive bid, or how did we get here?
I believe, that's actually a good question. I don't know. I will find that out. Oh, I'm sorry. It's right here, it's Texas DIR. We purchase it through that.
Yeah, I was going to say that.
Any other questions, comments? Then we'll move on to Item G, consideration approval of, thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Consideration approval of deductive change order for a contract with Infinity Contractors for Cooling Towers Replacement Project on the Southeast Campus in the amount of a negative $55,406. Ms. Allenese.
Yes, so this is an example of what we were just talking about, that it's a return of contingency from the overall project that would no longer require board approval with the adoption of the policy changes that we've recommended.
Questions? We'll move on to Item H, which is similar, consideration and approval of deductive change order for a contract with Fort Worth Electric for Chiller Replacement Project on Northeast Campus in the amount of a negative $25,915.39.
Yes, again, savings that would no longer require board approval.
Questions, comments? We'll move on to Item 6, which is review of proposed individual action items for board meeting on January 21, 2021. Item 6A, consideration approval of a three-year pricing agreements with GTS Technology Solutions, Dayhill Office Technology, and NetSync Network Solutions for replacement computers, and aggregate annual spend authority up to $2,300,000. Mr. Pacheco.
Yes, this request is based on TCC's five-year in-user computer replacement cycle that we have. We paused last year's replacement cycle to ascertain new standards by working with workspace environments. By working with them, we established the new standards, and they were approved last year. To acquire the new laptops, we conducted a reverse auction via procurement to identify the sellers and then get the prices set for the next three years. Based on the sellers' bids, several companies were identified, and three companies had winning bids covering our specifications. Over the last six years, TCC, through the reverse auction, has saved $717,000. Procurement estimates that we will save $4.7 million over the next three years versus DIR pricing. Any questions?
Questions, comments? Ms. Allen?
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Pacheco, I just want to find out, so these are existing computers? Are these desktops and laptops, both?
Yes. These are actually, what we're doing is we're replacing desktops and laptops to a standard that we got with workspace environments. So it's a single unit that can do four different things.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, so a person may have a new desktop, I'm sorry, new laptop, but they would also potentially need this kit that we talked about earlier. They may get both this and a kit, is that correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay, all right. And then the inventory and asset management database that you referred to here, is that part of that new software that we purchased, or is that the existing one that we have in place today?
That will actually be part of the new process. It's also in the existing one as well.
Oh, okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? There be none, we'll move on to Item 6B, consideration, thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Consideration approval of contract with Chambers Engineering LLC for roof drain and water ponding repair project on South Campus in the amount of $277,907.36. Ms. Allenese.
Yeah, so this is just ongoing maintenance and preventive maintenance to ensure that we don't incur roof damage in these facilities by maintaining the drains.
Questions, comments? Then we'll move on to Item 6C, approval, consideration approval of contract with Cables Plumbing for Phase 3 of sanitary sewer rehabilitation on Northeast Campus in the amount of $387,199.1.
Yeah, this is the ongoing effort to replace the sanitary sewer system at Northeast. Many of those mains are more than 50 years old, and so it's been a phased process to get that done, and this continues that effort.
How far along are we on that? Is this the last, or is more to come?
I'm looking to see if anybody on my team, I can get you an answer to that. Walt says lots more to come. 25 to 30%.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? We'll move on to Item 6D, consideration approval of contract with Jacobs Project Management Company for the District Bond Program Owners Representative Contract in the amount of $25,529,529.00. the amount of $25,529,795.
Yeah, so very quickly before we get started on a presentation that I want to provide for this and the next four, did you want to go ahead and read all four of them? Is that what your preference is, or?
Your presentation involves all four of them, doesn't it?
That's correct.
Let me read all four of them, and we'll consider each one individually. Item six D, six E is consideration approval of contract with Skanska for the redevelopment construction project on northwest campus in the amount of $10,278,981. Item six F is consideration approval of architectural services with Huckabee, Inc. for the redevelopment project on northwest campus in the amount of $7,962,972 not to exceed. And lastly, item six G is consideration approval of contract with Perkins &amp; Will for redevelopment design services on southeast campus in the amount of $1,917,124.
Yeah, so I'm going to give a briefing along with a number of partners that'll help to walk us through what the research that we've been doing since December and the path forward that staff is recommending. And we've been very busy since the December board meeting putting this together. Before we get to that, however, I'd like to take just a moment to introduce to you a new team member that we have. We mentioned last time that Gary Prather is retiring and that we've been in the process of finding a replacement for him. And so as the new executive director of real estate and facilities, we've hired, you can go ahead and come on in, Okong Hemmings, and he joins us from most recently from his stint in the Navy where he served in a role very similar to what we have hired him to do. And just to give you a little bit of a background, he's a registered engineer, excuse me, a registered architect. He also has a master's degree in civil engineering and project management. And the icing on the cake is that he did his graduate research in smart buildings. So I think that we found the perfect candidate to to help lead that team and to engage with Jacobs as we move this whole bond program forward. But I'd like to give him just a minute to to introduce himself very quickly.
Thank you, Susan. Once again, name is Okong Hemmings. I'm your new executive director for real estate and facilities. Just a little bit about myself, married to a wonderful nurse. We have three beautiful children. And as Susan mentioned, previous life was a naval officer managing the entire lifecycle facilities for facilities for U.S. Navy and several federal agencies as well, sometimes the Air Force, NSA as well. Definitely excited to be here to help TCC execute that mission every day and very mission-oriented, very customer service oriented. So excited to work with you, each and every one of you in the future. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to welcome the gentleman. I'm very excited about welcoming him with his excellent credentials, but just let me say that we know you can't replace Gary, but we are accepting you as a wonderful successor. And so we that gives you the opportunity to do an even greater job than Gary did. Thank you.
And I would like to add, go Navy.
Yes, so, okay, so we'll get started. You may recall that at our December meeting, we we had a number of questions that we were working our way through related to the delivery of the bond program and some of the construction methods that had been raised. And so we were here to be responsive to that and to walk us through a discussion around the conclusions that we've done at this point, made at this point. I'm going to start again like we're planning to do each time with the guiding framework, and we've we're calling that a framework now instead of the principles to ensure that we don't add confusion with 3GAP. But it's the same thing, but you'll note that we've included in number two a response to the suggestions that were made by trustee Barr just on Tuesday about making sure that we were reflective of the stakeholder input that would be guiding that decision-making. And so if we've captured that language adequately, great. If you've got further tweaks to it that you would suggest, we'd be happy to take those as well. Okay? And so you'll note that in the informational reports that you have in your packet today with the bond program handbook, we'll need to make this update to that as well since it was published and distributed before we received that suggestion earlier. So our purpose today is to do a couple of things, and part of it's about the strategic framework around all of this. I think it's been an interesting discussion because it's really sort of been a catalyst for a lot of our thinking about getting very strategic about what we want our facilities to do for us in the future and how to think about that on a district-wide level. So we want to spend a little bit of time reiterating the team structure and the roles of the consultants to make sure that there's a real clear understanding about how dependent we will be on the owner's rep throughout this process. We're going to outline some of the recent work that Jacobs has been doing since they were selected back in June, and then provide a summary and path forward on the alternative building methods. We've identified a specialty firm to help us with the smart building attributes that you'll hear from their folks today, and we'll be bringing back, we'll be adding to the agenda for next week. At the conclusion of today's discussion, our ability to engage them immediately in a contract as well, so that'll be an additional agenda item next week. And then we want to prepare you for the other items that are on your agenda as well. So just as a reminder, you've seen this before, we've added to it to show that beyond Northwest and Southeast, there are obviously teams in place to deliver the rest of the bond program. But of course, the trustees sit at the top of this, and the chancellor and myself are responsible for the administrative oversight. But then, of course, we've got Jacobs involved as our owner's rep to represent the interests of the board and the district and the constituents and taxpayers who pay for this program. We've got multiple design teams. You may recall that for Northwest, Huckabee and Gensler is on board. We also have Skanska that we've already engaged with as the construction manager at risk. At Southeast, we've got Perkins &amp; Will. We have not issued the RFP for the C Mar as of yet, but we will soon to get that construction firm on board. And then there's a variety of other folks who will be working at different points on the 100 projects that will emerge from from the different buckets of the bond program. So just to be, as a refresher about the roles and responsibilities of the owner's rep, one of their most important things that they do for us is that they help us manage the scope, schedule, budget, risk, quality, and change management of all of this so that we can make sure we deliver a really high-quality program and that we do it effectively and efficiently on behalf of the taxpayers. They provide a whole lot of staffing. So as you can imagine, by escalating to an $825 million program that far exceeds everything that we've been doing previously in terms of construction, and so we certainly don't have the staff to manage all of that. So they provide staffing in terms of project managers and related folks to help support all of that and to engage with the different teams that are that are hired to do the design and construction. And they facilitate decision-making, and I think we've seen some of that as we've had these conversations, that they provide their independent guidance as we're hearing from different folks to help us resolve any differences of opinion or to proactively resolve any conflicts that might emerge over time as we're delivering the program. So again, their constraints are, I guess, the framework under which they operate is that they represent TCC's interests. They help align all those consultants. It's complicated to work with all of those teams, and so it's their responsibility to manage that. We, again, delivering quality projects on time, on budget, helping us save money. I mean, at the end of the day, having an owner's rep in place should pay for itself by them helping us manage the program efficiently and make sure that we get the most value out of the dollars that we spend. One thing that I want to emphasize is that they are not the design team or the engineer, right? They are the program manager, and we hire other folks to be in those roles. However, they do have some engineers and architects and other licensed folks on their team to help with that, but their their role is not to stamp and seal those drawings at the end of the day. So there is a clear line there. So what I'd like to do right now is that we actually have a couple of guests with us today from Jacobs who came to participate. Tom Minehart is the senior VP over this region, and I'd like to invite him to tell you a little bit more about their firm. He has with him Kevin Connor, who's also a vice president here as well, and I'll let him introduce himself and tell you more about what their role is.
Thank you very much, Susan. Chairman, he, board, thank you for allowing us to be here today. My name is Susan Sittis, Tom Minehart. I'm responsible for Jacobs business in the southern U.S. as well as Latin America, and I wanted to convey to you, we have the next slide, please. Susan kind of captured our role, and I wanted to first thank you for putting trust in our firm to serve as your advisor and program manager in this bond program. As you can see, don't know how much you know about Jacobs, we were actually founded in 1947. We have our headquarters here in the Metroplex, and we probably have 200 to 300 team members right down on Main Street in our Fort Worth location. We pride ourselves on partnering with clients really diverse in terms of services. That's why we're a global solutions provider, everything from conceptual design, strategic consulting. We're actually involved with Six and a Pharma Bio-Manufacturer right now working on the COVID vaccine, all the way through the likes of program management as well as operation and maintenance. We actually operate several water treatment plants. We provide city services. We will actually run the public works department for some of our clients in areas such in the southeast as Georgia. And program management, that's why we're really here today. We're proud of our pedigree, not only within the state of Texas, but on a global scale with the likes of Panama Canal, the London Olympics. We just completed the Tex Rail program management, and we really hone in in this specific assignment in higher ed and our school support, school bond programs. The slide illustrates here, we actually have little under $94 billion. Now, that's total capital where we serve in this capacity as owner's representation. And right here in Texas alone, about $13 billion. We have several colleges as well as school districts that we are supporting around the U.S. right now in a similar capacity. And why that's important, we can take tools, systems, processes, things that your peers are seeing in the industry that work and don't work, and bring that to this program and work effectively with the likes of Perkins &amp; Will and Skanska and the designers and builders that you selected. So we take it very serious. We know that we work for the chancellor as well as the board. We have your best interests in mind, and we want to be able to advise in that capacity and take that experience and lesson learned. And I want to be here to make a commitment on my behalf and the corporation's behalf that we're going to do everything we can to make this bond program successful, including, as I told Susan at chancellor this morning, personally, I will get engaged to make sure we have all the resources needed to effectively deliver this, and you have the best athletes on the field from our corporation. So once again, I thank you for the opportunity, as does Kevin. He's actually here out of our Metroplex operation, vice president of sales, and I'll be happy to pass it back to Susan, or if you have any questions about Jacobs or our capacity, I'd be happy to answer that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so then moving on to the design team, and you've gotten to know many of them while they're lining the wall here and they're here regularly at our meetings. But from the beginning, a lot of that work that you saw at the December workshop where we, or work session, I guess, where we worked our way through all of the planning and stakeholder input that had happened over a long period of time, certainly these folks have participated in that gathering of information and then working through the program requirements with each of the principal panels as well and aligning that. They also obviously work from our technical design guidelines and complete the design all the way through construction drawings, and they'll help us with through the permitting and procurement process as well as the construction contract administration. So, you know, they're here for the long haul as well and are the foundation for a lot of the design decisions that you've seen so far. So I will say that their work is based on a number of things. It's knowledge of code requirements, which have continued to get more stringent over time related to energy efficiency and so forth, and they evolve and change, and we rely on them to be aware and applying that effectively. They also bring to us the prevalent industry practices. The teams that we have in place have extensive higher ed experience as well as other industries. And then they also have the design standards of TCC and include, you know, we've talked a lot starting in October about the sustainability efforts over the last decade that the college has had that has informed some of the design guidelines that have evolved, and so they're certainly aware of that being an objective. There's also evidence of different smart building attributes that have been applied over time, although what we'll talk about today is it's a real opportunity for TCC to, in a more cohesive way, define a consolidated digital roadmap. I will, I will say that I think that this probably puts us at the forefront in terms of a public higher ed institution to really be working on a digital roadmap in a very targeted way. I certainly don't think that we're behind others. We've been applying a lot of those thought processes over time, and it's an opportunity to really put a finer point on it in a way that I think will make us a leader among our peers. So and then finally, the construction team roles and responsibilities, and of course, we've got scans on board for Northwest. We brought them on early, and we'll do the same thing for Southeast because they provide a lot of pre-construction expertise as the design is happening to think about cost estimating, scheduling, value engineering. It was particularly important at Northwest because of the complexity of that program to sequence it in such a way that we could continue to operate it while we were doing construction. And so they helped us figure out different ways to shorten the timeline associated with getting that project done and save money in the course of doing that. So they'll also help us with best value procurement, making sure that we're getting good pricing from all of those suppliers that'll be necessary for the project. They execute a high-quality construction work in conformance with what's been designed. And part of having them on board early also helps us minimize some of the changes that might occur during normal construction because they've been involved throughout the process. So again, it was an effort at making sure that there was a quality delivery of the So I want to share basically what's been going on since July. We hit on this last month where we talked a little bit about our dependence on Jacobs to supply resources to help us deliver the program, and I want to make sure that I'm being more clear about the different roles that they play because we've been very focused on one aspect of what they've been helping us sort of work our way through, but it doesn't paint the full picture of what they've been doing. So beginning in July, that's when we contracted with them initially for the sprint start that they did, and so they came on board, and obviously, we were well underway with a lot of the work. We have the benefit of the college of being in a cash position that we were able to move forward with a lot of design work, even leading up to the bond election. And also, the condition at Northwest Campus dictated that we really needed to be making progress very quickly on what we were going to do about that facility with the condition of the exterior, those buildings and the scaffolding that had been erected and so on. So obviously, we had a lot in motion when they arrived, and so they spent some time familiarizing themselves with the program. They've been mobilizing staff and getting positions filled and began conducting interactive work sessions with our staff and the different project teams that were already engaged, and began integrating the program management scheduling and budget tools. And I want to dwell on this for just a minute, but we, so we've got a software system in place called Project Mates that allows us to track. We just installed it this past year. It allows us to do program management as a tool. We've integrated it with the finance system of the college so that we can get real-time information about dollars that have been expended and so on. However, as we get organized around the bond program, part of what we've relied on Jacobs to do is to apply best practices to help us organize that, use that tool effectively, make sure that it's available to everybody involved in the projects. They always have real-time information about budget, dollars spent, change orders, decisions that have been made, and so on. And part of that has to do also with us refining the actual list of projects that'll ultimately be constructed and packaging them in such a way that they can be let and delivered by the different vendors. And so there's a lot of very detailed organizing work around that that they're engaged in now and have been for a number of months. And the goal is that by August, when this board receives its second iteration of the five-year capital plan, that it'll also be a much more effective communication tool that we can publish on a more regular basis that identifies all those projects, gives you a sense over the five-year horizon when they'll occur and so on. So it's a matter of organizing all of that on this scale that the college hasn't seen in, I guess, ever in terms of a program of this size. And so organizing that in such a way, and I think what it'll do eventually is give this board a lot more information to be able to look at. It'll also feed the website with schedules and so on, so it'll be forward-looking versus, you know, sort of the iterative way that you often get to see it now. So a lot of that groundwork has been underway with the team. Also at that point is when we began negotiating the longer-term project. Also, at that point is when we began negotiating the longer-term project or contract with them for the duration of the bond program. That took a little bit of effort for us to figure out what the team structure needed to be and how many people they needed, how they would integrate with the resources that we have available here to make sure that we came in at a reasonable price. And you may recall that we showed you that we ended up at a very good percentage of the total bond program in terms of cost for our owners rep compared to our peers out there as well. So then in September and October, they began, they commenced with the Northwest Campus project in earnest. And at that point is when we started having more conversations about certain building methods and opportunities like POE lighting. And so they started engaging with the different industry players along those lines. We made an initial presentation to the board at that point and then organized the sustainability workshop that happened in October, which was, again, a good opportunity for me, being only a year into the district at that point, to understand the 10-year path that everybody had been on in terms of efficiency and where we had opportunities to grow. Doing some of this organization actually was a little bit beyond what the normal scope of program management would be because they're helping us make sure that we're very well-defined and organized around what our objectives are. And so they've been assisting us with that as well. So then in November, they mobilized the initial project controls overview, which is a continuation of what I just described in terms of us using our tools and making sure that we've got good data all the time for everybody involved who are managing the programs, outline that website and the initial parameters that you've previewed, and we expect to launch in the next couple of weeks. And also began working to integrate the two buckets that will require more definition than they currently have. So of course, Northwest and Southeast have had a lot of work done where it's pretty clear where we're headed with those. But there've been a number of 3G AP projects, and what that means essentially is the contracts, the campuses that are not getting fully redeveloped will still need improvements related to their learning commons and how their student onboarding works and flows and how their workspace environments. And probably the one that you're most familiar with because you've been approving a number of contracts associated with it is that we've got a five-year plan for the classroom improvements and which ones get the full treatment as described by the ILE principal panel. And you've already been approving that work. And so it's a matter of organizing those funds into a way that we make sure that the highest priority activities get completed. In addition, there's a lot of overlap with the MEP programs to understand sequencing and making sure that as you're touching one space, you're thinking about all those projects. And so figuring out how to organize that has been a big effort that is underway as well. And at that point in November is the first time we presented the full contract to the board. So then in December, they delivered several things. We saw the program management handbook that was provided to the board, the website, as well as discussions about the digital roadmap and just sort of an initial teaser, if you will, about what that means and what we ought to be thinking about strategically as an organization. And then we also began what we're calling the 3G AP MEP mini master plans. And so what they started in November to think about how those programs get defined and integrated, we need to think very carefully about making sure that we don't touch something and then later on have to tear it out as a result of another project. And so really, master planning and thinking about how each of those campuses would most benefit from the use of those funds. And then finally, began identifying some of those specialty partners that we'll talk about today. And in January, very much of that work continued. So I will turn it over for just a minute. We've got a gentleman on the phone named Aaron Mahak. We have, in an effort to answer the questions that we've been presented by the board, one of the questions had to do with what is the smartest project that Jacobs has been involved in, and what we've identified as some that probably have the closest relevance to what we do as an institution. And one thing I want to point out is that, again, make a distinction between a program management role and a role that is more about design and engineering. And Jacobs is actually the electrical engineer of record for several projects that are identified here. I will note that all of them are intended to be high-tech and have smart attributes to the building. None of them actually decided to use POE lighting, which is neither here nor there. That's just, that wasn't the technology that they chose for their path forward. But these are good examples of higher ed working to have smart attributes to that. So with that, I can turn it over to Aaron, who is on, I believe, on the phone and can share a little bit more information about those projects for you.
Can you all hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. So again, Chancellor of Board, Susan, thank you again for this opportunity. And as was mentioned, we are the engineer of record, sometimes the architect of record on a lot of smart buildings and put distinction on smart buildings. Smart buildings, obviously, are deal with the solutions within those buildings that make them smart, but also they need to be secure along with that smart. But really, it's a strategy that kind of overlays not only the building, but in your case, an entire system or a community within higher education. Myself, I'm actually Global Solutions Lead for Higher Education, so I'm one of the architects kind of in the background. So it's kind of maybe appropriate for me to kind of be not in person, but kind of in the background on the phone because of the team there within Tarrant County. They basically call on me when they need information about people's solutions and other technologies that we have provided directly, as again, engineer of record that we can provide to help out. Couple of jobs I want to talk about right now. UT Austin Applied Research, it's actually linked with the Department of Defense. Within the facility, there's actually robots and things like that that the Department of Defense works along with the Pickle Research Center there at University of Texas, Austin, in order to develop. So in terms of the facility matching the technology within the building, this is a great example of that. As was mentioned, it doesn't have the POE lighting in it, but the safety and security in the smart building, again, have to be there in order to support the functions and the program that happened within it, which actually recently completed in construction and is occupied currently. The other project here on the top right is UTSA's SDS, or School of Data Science, NSCC, which is the National Security Collaboration Center. That collaboration with UTSA is with several three-letter organizations around the country. So again, it's a smart building because the programs within it need to be smart and secure. So again, no POE lighting, but it's got a skip on the upper floor to help separate a lot of the data and the things that happen within the building. So it's another example of a facility where it has to be smart because of the programs within it. Couple other examples that aren't shown. We work with Army Futures Command at Texas A&amp;M University right now, several of the tech companies, I believe, that we're going to reference in a few minutes. Some of those are our clients. So in terms of the highest end of smart buildings or smart cities or smart strategies, we're actually more on the private side than they are on the public university side, but we have that to pull in as well. And that gets me to the point here about critical for an organization to define its smart building goals and objectives, that strategy. Because again, the strategy has to be put in place, and then you pull in the solutions as appropriate to kind of supplement and support that program that happens within it. So again, as a resource to the group there at Tarrant County, we can assist you with any tasks, any solutions that you need to bring to the table on the design, architect, engineering side, again, not to duplicate those efforts, but to supplement what we already have.
Sorry, does anyone have any questions for Aaron? It really was intended just to make sure that the board understands the depth of the availability of resources to Jacobs as we move forward.
I would like to ask, have you ever overseen or constructed a building using POE lighting?
I have not personally. We have those on the team that have. I have not personally.
And I think when we get to intelligent buildings here in just a minute, you'll get that experience that we're suggesting that we bring to the table as well.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
This is Teresa. I'm sorry. This is Teresa Ayala. I just had a quick question. You mentioned something about smart building strategies. Could you kind of elaborate and expand on what that ultimately is and what the goal is for a smart building strategy?
Right, so kind of a little tangential thing, right? Trackable is hackable, right? So when you're talking about smart buildings, usually we talk about the solutions within the buildings that allow it to have more flexibility to kind of be in tune to the operations within the building. But the strategy is beyond the solution. The strategy is beyond the lighting. It's beyond the HVAC system that has to do with the pedagogy and instructional aspect of what happens in the building, plus how that interconnects around the community. Can't really tell you who it is, but we're working with a private university down in Houston right now about that, right? What is that strategy beyond just the facility?
And Ms. Ayala, when the intelligent building folks get up, I think that they'll provide sort of a step-by-step thought process on how you go about developing a strategy that may answer your question, Michael.
Thank you.
So thanks again.
Yeah, thank you, Aaron. So the other thing I wanted to share is that Jacobs did the facilitation of a number of conversations that I participated in, all but one of these, over the last several weeks to get a variety of perspectives on how POE lighting has been occurring and what people's advice would be in terms of, as you're thinking about a smart building, what would that mean? And our intent was to speak primarily to people who are designing and providing the infrastructure for that, or the users who were making the business decisions around it. So we didn't spend a lot of time with vendors, per se, that may be involved in some of the equipment or fixtures or things like that. We wanted to understand a little bit more about what organizations were trying to achieve and what the more global industry was seeing as the pattern. So we spent some time with Panduit, who is our fiber optic cabling company here at TCC. They're a nationwide company, and they provide a lot of the Ethernet cabling for projects like this and for POE lighting and for other uses of POE in buildings that are for access control, wireless access points, all those kinds of things that we talked about that would be in every one of our buildings. We also spent some time with BHB, and you may recall that they're actually the lighting designer, the engineer that was involved in the Sinclair Hotel. They're also on our EDIQ contract, and we've engaged them to begin assisting us with the project that we proposed down at South Campus to take a look at all of this and to get their perspective on having been through that experience as well as what, how we would partner going forward. We did speak to Microsoft, and we spent some time talking to their Directory of Industry Innovation and Smart Buildings and wanted to understand more about what they're actually doing and what their business strategy was around that. They are implementing it about half of the building that they're doing, but there were some very deliberate reasons that they didn't implement it in other areas that we'll talk about here in a minute. Walsh, I was not involved in this particular call, but that's the vendor who's associated with the Samsung facility that is up in Frisco, I believe. And they've been in the process of implementing POE lighting in particular to solve that they didn't have the electric capacity to do electric lighting. And so they made a choice there, absent really having developed the full smart strategy. And then finally, intelligent buildings, who you'll hear from in just a minute, that we spent some time talking to them. We will refer to them initially by Panduit as a big partner that they use across the country as well to help us get organized around what we were trying to achieve. So really, I won't bore you with the details of all of those calls, but the conclusion I walked away with is that there were a number of themes of what we heard from all of them, that POE will exist in all of our buildings. We know that it exists today. POE lighting is one attribute to that, and you'll hear more about that in just a moment from our intelligent buildings partner. And it can work in the right circumstances, but it's not necessarily the conclusive choice yet. There are still some pros and cons due to the maturity state of the industry and some operational issues as well as security issues and just decisions that need to be made over time. They're not insurmountable, but it certainly is something that needs to be evaluated to make sure that it's effective for what you're trying to achieve. The other thing that I wanted to make clear is that what we heard from BHB is that better than 90% of their business is still using line voltage lighting systems. And I asked him very specifically. I said, well, do you feel bad about recommending that to them? Or are you concerned that there is such a trajectory towards POE lighting that they're going to somehow be behind? And he said, no. And he said, that's the right place for some organizations to be at this point, and the industry is still evolving. And so I just want to make sure that everybody understands that it is fairly new for this to be used as a lighting installation, and that's why so many of the projects that we've talked about are either in design or construction right now. So it is evolving for that use on a wider scale. And so again, you just have to figure out when the industry is mature enough to jump into that and for what purpose. The other thing that, and you've heard this already today, it's critical for the organization to define our smart building goals. What is it that we're trying to achieve?
Susan, I'd like to make an observation here regarding Microsoft, for example. Their 3.6 million square foot building is under construction right now, and they're using POE lighting in roughly 70% of their buildings. We have been told in the past that they're proceeding with utmost caution, and this was an initial project or something for them, implying that if anything went wrong, that they have the money to fix it. I spoke with the Director of IOT at Microsoft, and he said that information might have been true a couple of years ago, but they are proceeding full blast with installing the POE lighting at their campus in Redmond, Washington. But in addition to that, they've also built two data centers in Des Moines, Iowa, using POE lighting. They did another one in Wyoming, and they're building two more this year in Virginia, all using POE lighting. So they, Microsoft, which is a very smart, high-tech company, understands the potential of POE, and they're using it.
I think that's genuine.
So I think that's true, but I don't think that conflicts with the advice that I feel like we received. I mean, the reason it's not universal in their buildings, as I understand, is that they had to make deliberate choices about where to use it. So for example, I think they are using it extensively in their specific workspaces with the objective of having a lot of data around employees that are coming and going and that kind of thing. But they didn't use it in their common areas and their lobbies and all of that because of the lighting fixture availability that we've spoken about previously. They didn't use it in their parking garage because of the concerns about security since it's dispersed. And really, what that says to me, though, is that they spent a significant amount of time planning when and where to use it and what their security team was comfortable with in terms of deploying it. And so it's not a matter of if it can work. I think we've said from the beginning, obviously, there are organizations that are using POE lighting. It's whether it serves your purpose and whether you've planned and organized your effort appropriately to make sure that you don't have any unforeseen consequences. Lots of decisions about whether you load up your IT closet with all of it or you distribute it throughout the buildings and what are the consequences for maintenance and for security under those circumstances. So the point being that they had to work through all of that as an exercise to decide what it is that they wanted to do. I will tell you, having spoken to a public entity as well, we visited with Round Rock ISD as an example, and to understand what their objectives are, and they're going from a state of not having any controls on their lighting at all. And so they've got some pretty significant opportunity in terms of energy savings, and they're trying to figure out, is this what we would want to standardize on or not? Much like we had made a decision a number of years ago to standardize on N Light, which may or may not be the future for us going forward. And so they've gone through that exercise. We've asked questions about, well, have you, because we get conflicting information about price of fixtures and installation and how does that pencil out, when will you have really done that analysis about whether it was cost-effective? And they're just working their way through that as well. Each of the, both those ends of the spectrum, both also talked about needing to have an operational plan to make sure that you understand over time how it's going to be maintained. Again, not insurmountable, it's just something that requires effort and planning to make sure that you've planned for it accordingly. And Microsoft, and they're about to, I mean, I guess they're months away from opening that particular facility, and they're still in the process of developing and refining that. So the whole point is making sure what it is that you want to achieve to make sure that you've planned for how systems that particular facility, and they're still in the process of developing and refining that. So the whole point is making sure what it is that you want to achieve to make sure that you've planned for how systems will integrate. The other thing I'll mention is that what we heard often is that because we're an existing built environment, it's not just new buildings. Part of our planning and thought process needs to be, how will this operate in the larger context of the district in terms of what we've already got deployed, how we would share data, and what that would mean in terms of either energy savings or any other kinds of operational impacts that we have. So I just say that it's a matter of being strategic about what it is that we're trying to achieve. But I'll talk a little bit more about the themes of the advice, and then what I'd like to do is get the guy who knows way more than I do, the Intelligent Buildings guy, on to visit with you a little bit about this. So, again, it's critical for us to define what it is that we're trying to achieve. It'll be different for different types of organizations in terms of what's practical, what's desirable, what will be effective over time. And also, there's a myriad of ways to accomplish any end goal. The universal conclusion was that it wouldn't be cost-effective at this point, particularly in terms of energy savings, to delay construction of where we are with Northwest on Buildings 1 and 2, just because those delays would far offset any energy savings, and there's other ways to solve it. And so, again, we've sort of got to marry up that context of where we're at in the process with what the goals are. So those future opportunities do remain intact for us to plan for how we would do data sharing and make sure that there's open architecture across the systems that are in place so that we can share that data. But with that, I would like to do is, we're going to shift gears a little bit and talk in more detail about this particular topic, but Aaron Zarfati from Jacobs will help us with parts of this conversation, but I'd like him to kick us off before we listen to the Intelligent Buildings team that we're recommending to engage.
Mr. President, trustees, Mr. Chancellor, good afternoon. It's nice to see you again, and I apologize for confusing you with two Jacobs guys named Aaron, but I guess that's who presents on Thursdays in the afternoon. But what I'd like to do is, in a way, facilitate the discussion, the analysis that we've had. And what we did is, we took what you said at the last board meeting, and we took that to heart, and one of the things I'd like to do is really thank you. Thank you for challenging us to think about the future and the possibilities. I think it makes us all better, and I think with the right approach, we can come to solutions that are great for the citizens of Tarrant County and the stakeholders of TCC. One of the things that, you know, we do as Jacobs is to try to facilitate and mediate that best path forward solution. And what we've done, and we're going to present on the next slides, is take a look at the various components that have been offered and some of the path forward that is available. So continuing the conversation with PoE and PoE lighting, what I'll do is, I'm not going to spend a tremendous amount of time, but I'm going to turn it over here in a second. But to reemphasize what Susan was saying, PoE in general is a refresher power of Ethernet is the platform that enables smart buildings, and PoE lighting is an alternative that can work on that PoE platform among others. And there are emerging examples of successful PoE lighting solutions, Microsoft, Samsung, Pfizer, Sinclair, and others, and we continue to learn more about that process, and so we can draw upon their experience. And I'll keep referring, a gentleman who we're about to introduce has been integrally involved in a lot of this and can speak to that at a much more detailed level. We also, in working with Intelligent Buildings, the firm on the next slide, can move the Northwest Campus project forward. We can and should. There's a lot of motivation, there's a lot of momentum, rather, to keep that project moving forward. And at the conclusion of their study, we can determine, without too much lost time, and this is one thing that we've confirmed with Intelligent Buildings at a high level, that we can move forward because there's market forces that are motivating to do it now, that we can come back and if we decide on a different path, that we can adjust, I don't want to say relative, but there's an equation there that we believe makes sense to keep moving that project forward. But our prime recommendation is, and as we've learned, the conversations with Pandoit, and then we got in touch with Intelligent Buildings, is to bring a specialty consultant to guide not just PoE lighting, but the smart buildings discussion in general. The smart buildings discussion really is what underpins the entirety of this plan. PoE lighting is a solution to an outcome that we determined in the smart buildings discussion. So we'd like to engage them to lead us in that effort to develop that. Upon completion of that study, we would make appropriate updates to TCC's design guidelines so we can memorialize that, if any, or as required as an outcome of their study. But one thing that, you know, I'll say as I stand here today, is we will, it's a five-year program, it's a lot of money, we will actively explore opportunities as appropriate to use PoE lighting and the other technologies that we use here across the bond program. It's not just limited to the Northwest Campus, but we're tasked really with managing the $825 million, and so we will do what we can to make sure we explore those and provide comparative analyses as appropriate to each individual project as we move forward. So further on the engagement, I'm not going to spend a bunch of time on this slide. I will let Andy introduce himself and his credentials a little bit more, but we are going to recommend engaging Intelligent Buildings as your independent consultant to lead that digital roadmap, collaborating with all of the wonderful people that we have here that have a lot of experience and talent. They're a firm with industry-leading approaches to defining smart building capabilities. They've got tactical, real-world experience in these technologies, and they're going to help us develop that digital roadmap. So I won't spend too much time and blabber it. I will turn it over to my phone friend, Andy Schomburger, with Smart Buildings, Intelligent Buildings.
Thank you very much, Aaron. Thanks to the board, thanks to staff. I look forward to engaging with the conversation, hopefully living up to all the tire pumping that has been done of our services over the last little bit. So happy to dive into this and tell you a little bit about us. If you can advance a slide for me. IB was founded in 2004, and we've, since then, been singularly focused on providing advisory services and ongoing management support in this smart building market. Very vague what that is, and one of the lessons we learned very on in that process was to define what a smart building is for our clients, and that's been our primary role for folks in development, in existing portfolios, in campuses, in higher ed, and in a lot of public institutions, really trying to find how to innovate in real estate because there's just so much opportunity and so much cost involved in applying these lessons. So we're based in Charlotte, North Carolina, but have staff across North America. Myself, I'm a mechanical engineer, kind of green building dork by trade, and I'm actually based in Toronto in Canada. So we're scattered, just like our clients are, and I think that's a real benefit for you because we've learned a lot of lessons of how folks have done things right and wrong in the industry over the last almost 17 years now. So we've really been innovating in this space, and if you jump a slide for me, I'll give you some examples of our clients across those resource, or sorry, those real estate verticals, if you will. And you can see there's folks in retail and higher ed and government sectors and REITs and developers and even the technology companies. Myself, I came from the Cisco Smart Building Team four years ago where I was doing a lot of the Power Ethernet market development. One of the first real large-scale projects of Power Ethernet lighting deployment in North America I was involved with, that was the Cisco headquarters in Toronto in Canada. So lots of war stories we can get into about projects like that. But in general, our role here has been to help folks define what a smart building is and play a collaborative role with them and their design ecosystem to make their smart building roadmap a reality. And just higher ed customers in specific, we're currently doing some exact master planning like that with Dartmouth College. We did it for Stanford, my alma mater here in Canada, McMaster University, George Brown College from a community college perspective. And there is no one-size-fits-all in this. Everybody's journey is very different. Some are large-scale master planning, needs to touch everything to do with a building on a campus, and others are very tactical about a particular application. Microsoft is a great example of that. They're actually a client of ours as well. A couple of years ago, we helped them evaluate the analytics marketplace for them, looking at how to analyze energy and utilities and work order data on their campus. And as a result, they went out and did what Microsoft does. They looked at best-in-breed and make it versus buy it, and they've now deployed a lot of that and have some great analytics as a result of, you know, our engagement with them. And we're currently engaged on an ongoing basis with them. In fact, it may have been Emmanuel that you were talking to at Microsoft. So they're an innovator, and we've kind of helped them and supported them very tactically over the years. So I know that's a logo dump, but my point would be to show you, we've been working with innovators in commercial, corporate, institutional, and higher ed for a decade and a half. This is what we do. Next slide. So what we're doing, I kind of touched on this before, is really trying to break down the barriers between people in industry as well as the technology buckets and how things are designed, the silos, right into the divisions of construction between IT, the information technology and how it's bleeding into buildings. PoE is a great example of that, and the operational technology, the building automation, the energy meter and the lighting control. And there's really, you know, it's a bit of a discordant, fractured mess as a result of how that's evolved over the last two decades since buildings started to digitize. And you have to take into account the fact that we're dealing with bricks and mortar and technology life cycles, you know, from our phones and the rest of the information technology we're used to using, don't necessarily apply to buildings. So there's been a bit of a struggle for that, you know, to get over that and how to quantify benefits and qualify benefits. So IB's role has been to sort through this mess and help you build a plan, help you build out that digital roadmap and how to get it built and feel like you're taking a lot less risk as a result. Next slide, please. So how we do that is, we do not start, we don't recommend, starting right with an analytics engine discussion or PoE lighting, or this machine learning algorithm, or this dataset, or a data lake, or a digital twin, or keep going with, I'm sure, a lot of the buzzwords you've heard of. We want to start with, what are your goals and outcomes, and turn those into new capabilities. Then we can look at what systems enable that. That is how an architect designs a building for you, too. They say, what are your goals, what do you need it to do, and then they build a program, right? They don't get into what they think is really cool and what'll look good in their portfolio. I'm an engineer, so I say this all the time and pick on the architects, but the methodology makes a lot of sense. So we want to start from that perspective and take into account the innovation industry when we look at picking and choosing the data and the systems and some of those really cool, the blinky lights, if you will, that enable those outcomes. And our real value to you here is as a shortcut because we've seen where others have had success. We've seen where they've struggled, and we can get you over those hurdles with less struggle. Next slide. So there are some foundational elements. It's very important to take into account the use of the networks. You've obviously been discussing quite a bit around both power and communications. We call it the fourth utility. It's actually a service mark that we've registered, is really take advantage of the networks in the building and have them act as another utility, just like water, air, gas, electricity, steam. You know, this really is table stakes nowadays. Now, devil in the details, how far you go with leveraging the network. And as was commented earlier, it very much is client-dependent and circumstance-dependent and market-dependent based on building code, based on where you are on standards, based on your appetite for innovation, based on, you know, as was stated earlier, the changes to operational structure. A lot of these questions, it's our job to help you figure out, but we want to make sure your buildings are using open protocols on the systems so the data is accessible and available. We want to use converged networks, and we want to make sure you own all that data because we're trying to future-proof your buildings as much as that's possible. But through practice, I think we've gotten a lot better at it with open protocols, converged networks, and available data. Next slide, please. Elephant in the room on this conversation, of course, is Power Ethernet, and the reason it can be quite a bit, cause quite a bit of turmoil is because of the quantity of edge devices and how much it impacts that network design and the mechanical design and the opportunities it can provide on experience or on health and wellbeing, if you're talking about tunable lighting quality. There's a lot of opportunity here, but, you know, it can be circumstantial as to how you approach it. But we're used to hearing the typical objections that the technology isn't proven, you know, that's arguable there on PoE, of course, been around for a while, you know, that it can sometimes cost more money to install. It can, again, depending on the market, you know, that the fact that it has been fairly slow in the market to adopt, like every other technology, that's not just to PoE, that is the conservative nature of the building, design, and construction industry, I would say. The fact that there's, you know, limited selection of devices, that's changing very rapidly. I know of 5 million feet of construction right now just in New York City that is deployed with PoE. It is accelerating, although I will agree with, you know, the assertion earlier of its limited market penetration, that is also still true. And there's more and more solutions available, and I wouldn't just say it's about lights. You can talk, go right down to VAV boxes being Power Ethernet powered. The building I told you about that I worked at with Cisco had 1,200 PoE VAV boxes in it providing, you know, heating and cooling control in it, and that was six years ago. So there are a lot of ways to take advantage of this. You can go into PoE-powered blinds now. We have a client on the West Coast that did that at their headquarters. So there's a lot, this discussion is important to have because it enables a lot of things, but we want to make sure that it's framed around what is the building capable of and what problems does it solve for you first, as opposed to going straight to a technology. Next slide. Just an example here on a use case. This is a client of ours, it's Warner Media. We've been doing quite a bit of work for them on various projects. This was their headquarters, and this is a dashboard, a unified user interface, we call it. And the goal here was, you know, to get rid of multiple interfaces on various subsystems and help streamline how they operate this very complicated building and help them reduce their energy use, reduce their peak demand, give them more insight into maintaining the building and fixing things before folks had reported them broken, automate where possible. So there's a lot of these use cases that it would be our intention to help you define in terms of operational efficiency or experiential benefit or risk reduction. The most well-proven path in real estate has been the energy and sustainability path because you can quantify the benefits. But we have lots of experience that we can go through defining those use cases with you for, to define that roadmap, those set of capabilities in plain business language that can be turned into design work with your very capable extended design teams. Next slide. So how, this is exactly how we propose doing it. First, we want to meet you where you are. There's no point pulling you down a path of the bleeding edge technologies that aren't going to make sense to the folks paying the bills here. We want to make sure that, you know, we're helping you future-proof these assets that you're obviously spending quite a bit of money on without bleeding as you do it. And there's a certain set of capabilities that will help you define, that'll become that digital roadmap, that we can then guide you into the implications to your network design, your power infrastructure, and at various stages of projects, and really give you that analysis in terms of dollars and cents, qualified benefits and quantified benefits to form a master plan, help you decide what are those operational impacts, you know, who's going to fix what. If I do pick PoE lighting for a next project, who fixes it? Is that an electrician or is that a network technician? Those types of things you need to consider because it can change, can change how you run your buildings, and we want to make sure that's for the better and not just, you know, chasing a particular piece of technology. And there are a lot of these conversations we can have with you about the analytics platforms, about what else have we seen in higher ed that's really worked? Maybe it's a focus on room scheduling efficiency and turning that into ventilation rate changes for sustainability. I've had that conversation in depth with another higher ed institution of ours lately, you know, and they're trying to use data from their wireless access points to help inform that. So there's a lot of ways to go down each one of these rabbit holes that it's our expertise to help you navigate the business side of things and turn that into design language from, you know, the folks you've been talking to and that are around the table here. So I don't think I paused to breathe during any of that. I am happy to take questions and dive down any one of these rabbit holes that I brought up and tried not to step in.
I enjoyed your conversation. That's very stimulating. I think this is a good conversation to have. You did have one slide here that showed that PoE lighting has a very high level of drop of energy.
So that was the number, sorry, if you go back to the previous slide, the network as an enabler. That was not, sorry, that was drops, that was number of cable drops, not as energy. So that is basically to give you a device count. Now, devil in the details there, whether you're able to daisy-chain devices, that's a manufacturer-specific discussion, but it's to give you directional idea of, you know, you obviously have a lot more lights than you do cameras in an average space. That's what that's supposed to show.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. And if you were asking, maybe I'm putting words in your mouth here, did you mean this demand limit drop here on that image on the right or the PoE slide?
The previous slide to that one, yeah.
Yes, that's a device count estimate, yes.
Okay, that's not energy drop. Okay, thank you.
Energy drop is very appealing, and that depends on where you're starting from. The energy drop compared to AC LED is there, but it's not massive. If you're comparing to AC fluorescent, obviously, you know, you can be 90% less energy, and that becomes very appealing and justifying of investment. We can go down that, you know, that discussion with you on, you know, the costs, the difference of costs in fixtures and ballasts and power and cooling and, you know, reengineering costs, if you will. We're very experienced in going down each one of those discussions to help you understand the benefits, and I would pull that back a layer to say, let's look at- would pull that back a layer to say, let's look at the network in its entirety, at all the edge devices to see what opportunities there are. It's not specific to one technology.
Right. And you're familiar with Plenum switches, Plenum rated switches and distribution network? Yeah, okay.
The Cisco Digital Building Team that built out that switch, I was a part of it, the Cisco Advanced Services Team. In fact, we actually built out a design guide for architects and engineers on how to use PoE lighting that's public I can, I can share with you.
Thank you.
Welcome. All right. Thank you, Andy. You're welcome. We're clearly excited to get them engaged and help us forward that overall discussion to discuss. So now the other technologies that have been presented and discussed over the last few months, I'll touch on briefly. So with the VRF, with the variable origin flow in terms of an HVAC solution, this one, as opposed to say, PoE lighting as a mature or immature or somewhere in between technology, VRF has been along, has been around for a long time. It was invented in Japan, I think, in 1982. It's primarily used, it's a primary choice in Europe and in Japan and other parts of the world when used in their appropriate use cases. It has not caught on as much or as rapidly in the United States. But there are use cases that are indicated, to use that, that kind of terminology. In fact, the General Services Administration commissioned a study a few years back to see how they could implement it in their buildings. BHB Engineers, who was referenced earlier as the PoE lighting design firm for the Sinclair, also did the VRF there and has published a white paper. The general outline, and so my point was saying that is that we have a very good understanding, engineers do, of when to use VRF and when not to use VRF in terms of energy efficiencies. Generally speaking, if you meet these kind of criteria, you could qualify for using a VRF and take advantage of its benefits in terms of energy efficiency. So when you're doing a renovation for a historic building or somewhere where you've got very tight ceiling spaces and you can't afford big thick ductwork, you can run thinner refrigerant lines, that's a use case that is indicated. Or if you've got inefficient infrastructure to support that, same thing with the ductwork. Also where you want highly customized loads in smaller spaces like a hotel, where you need that customization in spaces, that also, that also is indicated. And then kind of a sweet spot, when you're talking about energy efficiency, is between 10,000 and 80,000 square feet. But the important caveat there is without access to central chilled water and heating water. So as opposed to say, on the Northwest Campus where a lot of money's been invested in chiller upgrades to provide that central loop, that is still a more energy efficient and cost effective solution. So it wouldn't necessarily be indicated. And as of yet, or as of now, VRF still remains slightly more expensive from an upfront cost, especially in North Texas where it hasn't been adapted so much. There's not a lot of qualified installers to it. In the appropriate use cases, the energy efficiency would pay back, but you'd have to account for paying a little bit upfront to do that. With that said, TC, yes?
One question, and you may be covering this in a minute, but we have a very efficient chilled water system on Northwest Campus and it's very efficient, very efficient, very cost effective. But VRF, one of the advantages is it doesn't circulate air throughout the whole building. And my question is, have you, and you're not part of the design team, but has the design team made any adaptations because of COVID? In terms of room size, you know, separation of people, air circulation, et cetera, et cetera. This is critical. We hope that we're going to get immunizations and everybody's going to be safe, but there's another COVID coming, most likely. And I know that the Anamo College in San Antonio has been, they're going through a bond program and they're very, very concerned about this, these kind of concepts. And I'm wondering if we have done any investigation of how to adapt to counteract the COVID and any other similar threats?
Great, great question. I'm not going to claim to know the full answer, but I'm going to look over for some head nods over here if we've studied that on these buildings. I see head nods, yes. What we'll do is we'll provide a better response, I think, that addresses that in more detail, because I don't, I don't have that. But that has been a consideration, it is a consideration, I think, in all public buildings where we have to address air quality and take care of that. But we'll provide a more comprehensive response to that question. Okay, so the last, the last two bullets is, you know, TCC is already familiar. So we already have hands-on experience with VRF. We're using that at the Southeast Early College High School, primarily because it was too far from the chilled water loops to take advantage of that efficiency. And so it made sense to use it there. So it is a consideration of technology that is used. I think we studied the UNT example where they had a police building that was also too far from the loops. So made sense there. And then, and then another indoor athletic facility. So there is a lot of information that we've done. And similar to PoE lighting, I'll make the commitment here, that as appropriate, we will actively explore opportunities to use VRF and other technologies where the engineering makes sense to do so. Okay. And then also with insulated concrete forms. Similarly, it is a system that has been around a while, again, in terms of becoming the prevalent building method, hasn't gotten there. But they are efficient, they are energy efficient, and they're good for many building types under the right circumstances, be it load restrictions, or, you know, you've got particular deals. Again, I'm not, I'm not going to go beyond my bounds of knowledge on this, but bringing that to bear. There are certain considerations. A ICF wall is a load bearing system that utilizes combustible materials, which makes it, requires it to have fire rating. What that means is that then you are limited to how much window space or glazing space that you can, you can provide, which makes meeting natural lighting requirements more challenging, not impossible, more challenging. And also, you know, Northwest Campus is an example, takes advantage of the natural light harvesting. That becomes also more challenging when you have less glazing in the space. We're lucky and fortunate that one of our team members, Huckabee, is a local expert in the use of ICF construction. And so implicitly, that decision-making was factored into the consideration of Northwest Campus. But because of the other, the other factors, including indoor-outdoor considerations, it was not considered specifically as a vast method. However, ICF also does have the advantage in certain circumstances to expedite construction, which would mean a lower envelope installation cost. And so to that extent as well, where appropriate, I'm making the commitment here that we will actively explore those opportunities to use ICF as appropriate. And again, thank you for challenging us to think about these technologies.
Regarding ICF, it does have styrofoam on either side of the envelope. And I don't believe that burns, but it can melt, I think. It requires that you have a surface on the outside, whether it be brick or stone or whatever.
That I believe is correct.
And the same thing on the inside. I mean, you have to have drywall. But it does have, my understanding is that the six to eight inch ICF walls do have a very good fire rating of, UL rating of four, which is extremely good.
Yeah, that is, if we want to go into the details, again, the expert is right here.
Super.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
This is Quinn Morrison. Might this be a good time for us to take a quick break?
Sure, that's, that's fine. We'll take a five-minute break?
Okay.
That's fine.
Thank you.
The fire resistance rating of the typical ICF construction, that can vary depending on the materials that you utilize to encapsulate that. It is the foam that's the flammable material in that, obviously not the concrete. But we do need to protect that with layers of JIP or masonry or something to get those higher UL ratings from two to four hours typically. And I can address the previous question you had as well, going back to the VRF for what we're doing to help with COVID. We are, there's a couple of strategies that we're implementing for the Northwest Campus design, and that is UV lighting systems within the HVAC, as well as special filtration systems and compartmentalizations to limit the amount of air dispersed throughout the campus. And we are also using VRF on the Northwest Campus in targeted areas where we will have a need for cooling year-round when the chiller is not going to be, you know, servicing areas such as IDF closets and the like.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Did you have any additional questions related to ICF while I'm up here? Okay.
But others might. Are there any questions, comments, Ms. Greenhill? There being none, thank you very much.
Okay, you're very welcome. Thank you.
Who are the legal ass?
This is Teresa Yala, Mr. Heed. I do have a quick question.
Please do.
Just, can you just fundamentally, what is the, this kind of ICF or something comparable to it? What is, what does that make up as far as the actual construction cost?
I
I mean, just generally, is it 30% of what the cost is? Is it 40%? Is it, you know, I'm just curious.
I don't have that information. We'd have to follow up with you on that. There's a lot of variables that come into play for that. I don't have that asset cost at all.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
My understanding is it's just a very efficient system, something like 31 seer?
Your R value on that can be very well. It typically exceeds an R25, plus your continuous insulation is accounted for with the exterior foam. Okay.
Thanks, Paul. And I think, I think that's a good illustration as I, as I wrap up. Those technologies, the depth and quality of the team that we have between the experts and the architects and the engineers, intelligent buildings and others, plus the talent that TCC has in-house. And we're looking forward to working with Mr. Hemmings as well and, you know, taking his expertise to mind. The other, so to further talk about the digital roadmap and the way that we're, that we're working that. So we had some preliminary meetings, some meetings back in December with the following groups. So there was, there was Ms. Alanise and her group as well as Mr. Pacheco and his group, the Real Estate and Facilities Group, Kirby and now Mr. Hemmings as well, along with others, Mr. Williams, Jacobs, Huckabee Gensler, Perkins and Will, all collaborating to establish that digital roadmap. Now, the one piece that we're really excited about is bringing intelligent buildings in to coordinate those activities and result in a comprehensive digital roadmap that then helps us with the underpinning technologies moving forward. And so And so, as your program manager and your owner's rep, here's how we would like to move the program forward. We recommend continuing the design process at Northwest Campus. There is the concept of, you know, delays that cost money due to escalation, and we believe with intelligent buildings onboard, we can keep the train moving at Northwest Campus without losing any of that possibility for future proofing or making that smart building. So let's keep that project moving forward so we can take advantage of the bidding climate, but work diligently with intelligent buildings to preserve those strategies for implementing the best technology solutions for smart building. Along those same lines, continue the design process at the Southeast Campus and take more time, because we are early in the process, to study PoE lighting, VRF and ICF where appropriate on that campus and present that information more explicitly. Engage intelligent buildings immediately, that underpins that whole discussion, as well as approve the pending contracts that are on the docket for the board meeting. But truthfully, all of this is to continue building that momentum on the entire $825 million bond program. We've got a team of experts on the Jacobs team and our subs that are ready, willing, and able to get started, and we've mobilized them, they're excited, we're working on all facets of this program, not just Northwest Campus, not just Southeast, but your three GAP, your MEP, the website, the communications, and we're really excited and anxious to get moving. So with your blessing next week, we're excited to engage and move this forward. Thank you.
Would like to make the comment that not only those three technologies, but any new forward-thinking technologies should be included.
Yeah.
Solar and wind turbines, geothermal.
Absolutely. I'll say this, Mr. Heath, with Jacobs, Huckabee, Gensler, and I say Huckabee, Gensler, I emphasize Gensler is a global firm, and Perkins &amp; Will is a global firm, you've got some of the best consultants in the world to lead those kinds of discussions.
And Gensler actually designed the Samsung facility.
Yes, sir.
They were architect for that, and they're also the architect for New Waldorf Astoria. It's not a new one, it's a rehab in downtown Dallas in PoE. So just wanted to make that comment.
Yes, sir. I can assure you, you're in good hands. Thank you all very much.
So just to wrap it up as a reminder, you've got the four contracts on your agenda for next week. We're happy to answer any questions now or between now and then. In addition, the one that was not included in your contract was the Intelligent Buildings Group that you heard from today, that will add authorization for us to engage them immediately and get moving. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, comments, observations?
Mr. Heath, I would have just observed, I think there's obviously been a considerable effort to paint this picture, for lack of a better term, for the board. I know it's taken a lot of work on the part of a lot of people, and I, for one, want to express my appreciation for that.
Thank you.
I'd like to echo that. I think we all do, of course.
There's a big team of folks who've been involved.
Big team, that's right.
Yes, thank you for that.
It's a lot of work, and I just hope everybody appreciates the board is just trying to do their job. And we would request that when we get a presentation like this, that we get it more than four hours in advance, that we get it a couple of days in advance. So we have time to study it, and we can make intelligent comments and ask questions and that kind of thing.
Sure. I will tell you that on the heels of winter break, we're pedaling as fast as we can, and we will do our best to honor that. Our intent today was to sort of guide the discussion, and as you have time to look at it and study, if you've got additional questions, certainly reach out to us between now and next week to see if we can answer any of your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just waiting for the next agenda item, is why I'm hanging around, if you're wondering.
Okay, so Item 7 is information reports, Jacobs Bond Program Handbook revisions, Ms. Alanis.
Yes, so you may recall that we distributed this last week, or I'm sorry, last month, and it was intended to provide a framework for all of the different partners that will come and go over time related to the bond program. And based on some feedback that we've received, I believe from Dr. Morrison, we did a couple of things. We went back and added in the guiding principles, which we'll amend based on what we presented to you today, and the design drivers, just to memorialize that conversation that we've been having. But in addition, we, on page seven, we included information about when the Board of Trustees' authority and approval would be required for change orders, and that works hand-in-hand with the procurement policy amendments that we are proposing today as well, that certainly, anytime that there is a true change order that reflects schedule or scope, then that's of reasonable significance, it's defined by that $100,000 threshold, then we would certainly bring it back to the board. Previously, it just sort of reflected the administrative activities there, so hopefully that's responsive to the questions that were proposed. The other thing I'll add, back on page one, is that we did just memorialize also that security and safety is obviously a big consideration of everything that we do, and the architects certainly spend lots of time learning in that environment about how to make sure that that's the case, and our police department is involved with the redevelopment of these campuses as well and serving them well. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Alanis. We'll move on to Item 8, Report of the Chancellor.
Thank you, Mr. Heath. Just very briefly, in reference to your packet, you do have the spreadsheets that, again, that were alluded to on Tuesday, to the work that's been done, the work that is coming right now and in the future. And one comment was made related to the future and projecting out as far as we can. What will come on here in blue is what we certainly do know that will be coming in the future. However, all of this does exist on the five-year capital plan as well, and we'll ensure that that is of four months in your mind and that you have easily access to that five-year capital plan. So that really is what is feeding this, and really is a way in which to hold it all accountable as well. The five-year capital plan detail will eventually make it within these sheets. So I just wanted to make that reference and clarification. Thank you, Mr. Heath.
We will not have a closed session today, so if there are no further comments, suggestions, Dr. Morrison, then we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Mr. President, I thank you for the opportunity. I have one question, and I can, it doesn't have to be in session, but will we get a report from the attorney about the special election at the Thursday's, next Thursday's meeting?
The answer is on its way.
I think I lost it.
No, Ms. G.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Morrison, the plan at this point is to gather resumes from any applicants who are interested in serving as a trustee for District Five. We have received one resume, which has been forwarded to the trustees, and as of, we have not yet received any others. If others come in, we will forward them to you upon receipt. We will be asking all of the applicants to please make a personal statement in the public comments section on Thursday evening, and then we will have a closed session where you guys, where the trustees can interview the applicants, and then excuse them and have a closed session conversation amongst the board members. And if you feel like you have a good choice and you're ready to make a decision, you can go back out into open session and make a motion and announce your appointment. Did I answer your question?
Yes, so thank you for that. So the next part of the question is, will we be calling a special election to fill the vacancy beyond May 1st? Do we have a read on that yet?
We will, we will. We will be having, there will be an election on May 1st to fill the unexpired term for District Five.
So we will have to pass that resolution on Thursday, next Thursday?
We're working on that with Thompson and Horton, and I hope to have an answer on that tomorrow, and I'll be glad to call you when I do.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Everybody have a good evening.
If there's no further business, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Bye for now.